I don't speak Latin. I'm sure Sylvia will speak up.
It is seven o'clock. It's time to start our meeting. Call this meeting to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass today, July the 7th, 2014. Let's please rise for an invocation and pledge allegiance.
Dear Lord, we come before you this evening. We thank you, my Father, for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you, my Father, for the country that we live in, for the freedom of speech, and for the liberties that we enjoy. And we have to thank you and our servicemen and women that have paid the ultimate price by their lives. We ask that you be with each one of them, of the families that whose family members are still serving, that you protect them, that you bring them home safely. We ask you guidance upon us, the City Council, our City Manager, that we make the right decision for the City of Aransas Pass. This we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, or else.
Next, we have the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And since I know the majority of the audience is here, we're going to go ahead and move up number nine, which is review and discuss animal control issues in Aransas Pass. Sylvia?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, on June 20th, we did present a letter to our residents discussing the animal control and animal care services item, the issue that had arisen with our employee. The letter that was sent to our residents stated, restated, the mission of animal control services, which was that of animal control. If you recall, at our prior meeting, at our citizens' meeting, we had citizens complain about our feral cat population, about our possums and raccoons, and it was brought to light that they were not being put down. They were being captured and released back at the collection station, which caused a myriad of other issues on the north side of town. That staffer has since submitted her resignation, but it's led to a review of our policies within animal control. Right now, as it stands, it is not budgeted or built for animal care services. So the letter was sent out to, number one, let our residents know, but it was also a call to action for third-party agencies to step in and assist. We did have discussion with the SPCA. At this point, they are still trying to build their facility, so assistance from them is limited at this point. We have had a myriad of Facebook and city websites, death threats, you name it, come in, but very little offers of assistance. And so the vast majority of the people here are probably against the euthanization policy of animal control. And my comment to the council is without any additional funding assistance or any third-party or outside assistance, the current policies will stand because it is a public health issue at this particular point in time.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open it up if we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes is the limit, okay?
I'll get my time. Am I on? Okay. My name is Carol Salinas. I'm a resident of Aransas Pass for the last eight years. During those eight years, there have been at least three animal control officers, Carol Crockett having lasted for five years. That shows that we have a revolving door in that department, which means that there's probably problems. The stray dog population, when I moved here, was really bad, animals all over the streets. They are not as bad now. I understand that Carol has been possibly overreacting on the adoptions. She took donations, I myself was one of many who took dog food, 50-pound sacks, over to the animal shelter to try and contribute to balancing the budget. The washer and dryer that she had to replace after the fire, they were put in there through citizens' donations. Lowe's donated the washer. I donated money along with many other residents. Our city ordinance does state that adoption is allowed. It's in section 4-45. I understand that the city is not intended for unlimited keeping of these animals. I am an animal lover. I'm a dog lover. My last two animals have been adoptions. Perhaps 72 hours to let owners reclaim their animal, then put a deadline, maybe two weeks, to allow these animals to be adopted, not just to kill them. I would really rather not have to say, "I live in an animal, kill town." It just, you know, there are too many people that want animals and will be willing to adopt them. Foster homes, the Humane Society does not have a building. Perhaps they should consider trying to get foster homes. The survey quickly asked if we would be willing to donate $5 to help animal control, to help them kill animals. No, I would not. To help them keep animals for an additional 14 days, I would be willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas.
And council, just for the record, the $5 proposal on the utility fee was for animal care services, not for further euthanizations.
Thank you.
I'm Candy Hill-Ben, and I live at 211 South Arch. My question is, well, actually, if you have someone go to the shelter to adopt an animal, they pay the fees, they take the pet, get it shots, get it checked up, that way y'all aren't responsible for paying a vet. They bring the proof back to the city, it shows they're able to care for the animal. Now, my question is, Chief Blanchard, according to section 4-44, it is your job as chief of police to designate animal control officer? And City Manager is to hire a shelter warden? Is that how we do it, or?
That's supposed to be how we do it. However, the adoption policy, the ordinance also says may.
Of the animal control officer's discretion.
The issue is one of staffing. The Crime Control Board funds one-third of the animal control budget. Crime Control has stated they're not going to be funding any further animal control. So the adoption issue is really one of not just staffing and resources and building, but is actually one of assistance that's needed. And again, we did put out the call for help and...
Yes, I understand. I saw. And I know you're trying, but also stating that you're going to euthanize all these animals after three days, you can't do that. If they're wild and not adoptable, that's fine, but right now, I don't even think you have an officer capable that has the certificate to euthanize.
That's correct. That's why we've not euthanized since Carol's resignation.
Well, see, I'm a veterinarian technician, or I was like twenty years ago, and I know things change, but I know there are ways. When I worked at a shelter in Houston, the people took the animals to the vet. It showed, one, they were willing to care for it. You know, it's just, it's just an idea to help.
And I'm absolutely open to the idea. Nobody, especially me, has said I enjoy killing animals, contrary to popular belief. I'm not the one who does it, nor could I even do that job. However, it comes back to the points of staff, resources, and assistance.
Okay, but if he hires an animal control officer to patrol and pick up the strays or the ones roaming at large, and you hired the shelter warden, you'd have someone at the shelter full-time cleaning, taking care of the animals, and his officer would be out on the street, that's extra, patrol for the police department, and also helping get rid of the stray dogs and...
We do have two animal control officers right now, and even with two officers, we have over 137 open work orders for traps needed for feral cats, raccoons, possums, you name it. That's with the two staffers that are required. And even then, those are both general fund positions. And so it really is a matter of pull from one or pull from the other.
Right. Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tisha Baker. I live on Rabbit Run.
Can you state your complete address, please?
505 Rabbit Run Road. I'm not as articulate as everybody here, but I have 14 dogs. I take care of every one of them. I love them. I have two hands and two feet. Just tell me what to do. I will do it.
There's a sign-up sheet at the back.
I'll be the first name on there.
Thank you.
I'll be expecting a phone call.
Thank you.
My name's James D. Redman. I live at 701 South Lamont. Pretty much lived all of my life in Aransas Pass up to this point. And what I'm wondering is, how did we get to this point? Why wasn't this addressed several years ago? We knew the city was growing. We knew we had these things happening. Two years ago, Rockport had a big deal about no-kill shelter. All the vets got involved in it. The groomers got involved. Carol used to come by the house, ask, "Do you know whose dog this is? Would you mind watching a minute?" Well, I found out what I said, "No, I don't mind. What do you need? You need some food? We give her 50 pounds of dog food every so often." You know, "Ask us what you need." I never did hear about these calls for help or anything else. I never heard of the city having a planning deal, everybody getting together, addressing the issues, doing a workshop or something on it. No advertisement in the papers or on the marquee out there. And I'm just wondering, you know, why, all of a sudden, we're at this point, and then we're here wanting to, "Well, we're going to euthanize." Well, why don't we get a workshop together and ask some people to come up? And let's sit down and see if we can't get some volunteers to donate. If nothing else, take some of the animals and take them to other no-kill shelters. You know what I mean? Let's, uh, let's not sit here and cry and go on. Let's go for the solution of the problem and quit pointing fingers and blaming everyone. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council, for the record, no local vets have stepped up to offer assistance, for the record.
Thank you.
My name's Anna Guyer, and I bought my property down here over 20 years ago. And one of the things that I've noticed is that Aransas Pass tends to be the stepchild of the Coastal Bend. It's not highly regarded. Do we really want to have this black eye on our town where we live, where we send all our letters from? Is this what we want? If you need help from the community, why hasn't it been advertised? Why hasn't there been some kind of notice to the people who live here? I didn't know anything about it, and I live here. The thing that bothers me is we're setting ourselves up for a big lawsuit when somebody's precious poodle gets put down in three days because they didn't even know where to look for it when it got lost at Walmart. You can't find that shelter. You can't find anybody to ask half the time. I lost a dog down here, and what I was told is, "Well, there's three places it could be." And that was over 10 years ago. You guys are putting our city in a bad position by a policy like this, and I'm not in favor of it. But I am in favor of what he said. There's got to be a solution, and there's got to be a way for us to figure out a solution. Let's put the community to work looking for it. Let's find other agencies to help out. Let's go to the vets. You've got so many people here who are in favor of it. Let's use them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Guyer.
My name is Barbara Rasmussen. I'm from Ingleside, but you probably think I shouldn't be here, but yes, I should, because I have come to Carol so many times and said to her, "Who's being put down? If she'd tell me what cats are being put down, I'd take them home." I said, "They have a better chance at my house of making it than being killed here and euthanizing them." I mean, who made, who died and made you all God? Animals have feelings, too. You know, I've lived alone. I moved into my house 11 years ago. My son drowned, and I didn't know what purpose I had in life. And all of a sudden, all these animals start being dropped off. So I knew what God had me to do, and I'll do anything to help you, even though I live in Ingleside. Anytime you need help, you call me. Thank you.
Carol Salinas, Aransas Pass again. I'm sorry. The letter that has been referred to, I have not seen the letter. I try to stay active in city issues. I try to keep informed. I don't, I just heard through Facebook is where this all started and got me informed of what's going on. I never saw a letter. I have not, to this day, seen a letter. I have not, I'm not sure what citizen workshop that is being referred to. I didn't know about that. Obviously, I slept through that one.
I think you were there, Carol.
At a citizen workshop?
When we held at the Civic Center. It was the meeting held at the Civic Center a few months ago. The town hall, the town hall meeting.
I went to what I thought was a town hall meeting, and no one was there, and I think I got the wrong location. But, and I may have been there and just truly slept. But also, whenever I would take food over to the dog pound, I'd look at the dogs. The pens were clean. I never saw an issue with Carol not keeping things clean. And I agree with some of what the people have said. Let's look for a solution. I don't, you know, 72 hours and just start killing. It's in the ordinance. You, as the council, have the right to authorize a stay of execution. You know, give them two weeks, a week, some time to see the adoptable animals if they can find a home. Do the best you can. And if the budget has been exceeded, you know, I, let's do what we can do. Yes, we'll all volunteer, but like the gentleman said, I've not been asked. I have been out there and done what I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I'm Connie Bean, 202 West Roberts, Port Aransas. I'm president and co-founder of Animal Friends of Port Aransas. Our organization started in 2009. We're five years old this summer. Since my involvement with the shelter, we have not had to euthanize one animal due to space or convenience. We have had to euthanize because of they were vicious or they were very ill. I would like to help you. We have been very successful. Twice in the five years, our shelter, through networking, I'm the admin to our page, we have had our shelter emptied twice. That's just almost unheard of.
Well, thank you.
I have helped Carol. I have pulled from your shelter. I also do rescue. I have pulled animals from your shelter. I have provided vaccines. I have provided vouchers for spay and neuter and rabies shots for your animals. I would adore helping you get a nonprofit started. We are a nonprofit. I know an accountant that will probably donate his services. He did for us. If you want to talk afterwards, I would love to.
I'm sure there are plenty of people who would volunteer to...
Then let's do it. I'll help you with the solution. The past is the past. Let's move forward. Let's save some animals. Let's get them adopted. Let's get some volunteers. Let's get some fosters. We can do it. We did it in Port A. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for your help and assistance.
I'm Cherry Hoover-Harrison, what used to be the Jackson Hotel. I've had a few problems of my own to a few people burning it. My daughter just recently joined me, and she has a little pit bull, and Patsy was in heat, and a lot of these little boys around here have just been going crazy. And so some of the people have been picking up these little loose dogs, and I hate these little loose dogs get put to the death because they like Patsy's. You know what? So we do need to come up with solutions. So if you're missing a few male dogs, I know where they are. Okay, so check with me at 221 West Goodnight. Thank you.
Just for the record, the city does offer coupons for low-cost spay and neuter. That, that's an issue. They're not being utilized, so the stray population continues...
Yes, ma'am. Hi, my name is Lorena Lara, 800 Market Street in Portland. I am with Last Chance Rescue. We are a public nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3). We have pulled from your shelter before. We've also pulled from City of Robstown, Oasis Animal Control, City of Corpus, Rockport, and we help, we work alongside Deborah with City of Portland. Some of, the majority of our dogs come from the high-kill facilities. We are not a no-kill. So I know there's a lot of great, responsible owners here. I am willing to, I think I emailed you, we are willing to pull from your facility again, but I do understand your position about releasing to just people that are coming up saying, "We'll help," because you're still responsible for, if those animals are going to get fixed. If you have myself and the other, the lady that came up from Port Aransas, if you have responsible rescues that can pull and then get foster homes, but a lot of petitions being signed and, and Facebook comments are really not, that's, people just want to be on TV. I don't know. But anyway, so we also have grants. We have also had grants for years. We've been in an organization for 13 years. It's all about education and for the citizens. So this is a poor county. San Patricio County is. This has been something, the only, the only reason you guys are on the news is because that's it. Everybody decided to just come forward. Gregory's going through the same thing, but no one wrote a letter and no one decided to come forward. There's stray dogs everywhere. So if you guys are going to decide to allow rescues, myself, Last Chance Rescue is willing to help and come forward and pull some. We are limited as well. We do not have a facility, but we can take a few animals here and there. And unfortunately, I am not like the majority of the population. I do think three days is plenty of time. If you're missing your dog for three days and you're out of town, who's been feeding your dog for three days? You know, call PD, call animal control, find out where it's at. If you're going to wait to the third or fourth day or the fifth day to locate your dog, maybe you're not such a responsible pet owner after all. So that's all. Thank you.
Mayor and council, and also for the record, we did not stop adoptions out to third-party rescue organizations. They are able, she did reach out. They are able to continue adoptions, responsible nonprofits who have a record of adoptions, not just anybody who comes up and says, "I want to adopt," with no application or means for vetting the animal.
Three days would be enough time for an owner to locate their dog, to try and claim their dog, but that three days should be inviolate for the owner to come back. Those dogs should not be adopted out within that three days in case the owner is looking for their dog. After the three days is when I myself would like to see a certain time period to allow for adoptions of adoptable dogs.
Okay. We'll have one more comment, okay? And then we'll close this. If anyone else wants to speak, one more, okay?
I'm James Steve Edmondson, 701 South Lamont. As you get older, your mind works a little slower sometimes when you have to think of things. But what I'd like to ask the council to do, and the police department, and the city manager, and the city attorney and them, if they would put a stay on this three-day euthanization until after we have some kind of workshop or something to find out about getting these animals adopted out and stuff, and not be quite so hasty on it real quick, and see if we can come up with a solution on that. And I think that would appease everybody, give us time to get things together. And because of $5 fee, I believe that should be on a, on a citizens' comment deal or something and see how people feel about that, because probably half of them will go for it, half of them won't, or whatever. But, you know, like I say, we need to have a workshop and discussion and everything before we would do something like that hastily. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edmond.
There is, there is currently a stay. We don't have a, we don't have a licensed personnel. There is currently a stay.
There's currently a stay. I just want to, want to mention one more time, like Mrs. Carrillo, City Manager, that there is a sheet, a sign-up sheet. If you want to be part of the solution for the animal control, go ahead and sign up. Okay. One of the things, just as a last comment, I know that it's been a stressful situation here, not only for the residents, but also for our city staff. I know our city manager has received death threats, which, as far as I'm concerned, I know that I'm encouraging, if we can track down who is, who is threatening, the city manager, her family, any city staff, we will prosecute. I'm just letting you know that. This is uncalled for. We're trying to, we're trying to work and get a solution, and sometimes, you know, we will come together as a, as a group, as a council and with the residents, and we all have to be able to give and work together. You know, we're not all going to get what we want, but we're going to come up with the best solution. So once again, please, if you know of anyone that's doing any threats, we will not stand for that. We will not stand for it. Okay? All right, so we'll close this. Okay. Now let's go back to item number four. Presentation of a plaque by city by Police Chief Eric Blanchard and Fire Chief Rick Kilgore. Eric, if you don't mind, if anybody wants to leave, this is the time if you wanted to leave. Okay, go ahead.
We're glad to have you in the community, Bill.
Next is Consider an Act on Participation of 50% of the Infrastructure Cost for the Development of Highlands Unit Number Two Subdivision. Total estimated participation is $100,000.
Mayor and council, we've been approached by Ronald Voss and Bob Sells, local developers in the Corpus Christi Flower Bluff and Padre Island area. They are partnering with Joe Myers in acquisition of the property off of Lisa Ann for a 20-unit subdivision. The total construction cost for streets and all of the required infrastructure is about $200,000. They're asking for a 50% participation to the tune of $99,000. We've done the calculation with an average home price of $175,000. The city would receive a return on investment in a little over three years. We do have savings from the bond sale from the elevated water tank to be able to participate, and it would be a structured participation, meaning at 25%, 25% is reimbursable, and so on and so forth. It's not a complete cash out at one time. The area in question off of Lisa Ann opens up, opens up an entire participation area along that Highland area, so it is a win-win situation for the city, and staff recommends participation in the infrastructure. Okay. I have, Bob Sells and Ronnie Voss are both here, if you have any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Myers and Bob Sells. sorry, Joe Myers and Bob Sells.
Is there any question from anyone on the council?
Where's it, where's the location again?
Waring Lane, Lisa Ann, off of Highland. So the city is coming down with the improvements on Highland. The, the improvements would be internal and would open up this entire section of development.
They want to get started pretty quick on this?
You can ask the actual guy who's going to have the hammer in his hand.
Well, don't hit me with it.
We should be seeing Bob up here quite a bit.
My name's Bob Sells. I'm a builder on Padre Island. I've been there for 23, almost 24 years now. My projected start date per the contract is September 18.
Good.
And I want to start two houses immediately. There's two lots that are accessible. I'd like to start the two lots so that while I'm building these, while I'm developing the subdivision, I would be building these two houses at the same time.
As model homes?
As model homes, so that I can sell off of those two to get rid of the, the other homes in, in the subdivision. And potentially, hopefully, opening up and purchasing on the backside and moving the subdivision further back is my long-range goal. But I give you a little background on me. I don't know anything else other than building. I'm a hands-on builder. I've worked at it my whole life. I was president of the Local Builder Association in Corpus Christi in 2009, eight and nine. I'm a media, or I'm a past president for the Home Builders Association now. Also sit on the Texas Board of Residential Construction, the TAB, Texas Builders Association. I sit on their board one more year, and I have my life directorship there. I build an average of 14 homes a year on Padre Island, which if you think about it, 14 homes there, 20 homes here, a few more. But one of those houses is always, you know, 38, 4,500 square feet. So it's really three of these houses. I'm going to start out with two-floor plans, one at about 1542, 1550, somewhere in there, and then one around 1650. They'll be mid-income homes, not upper end, not lower end, but in the middle. As far as construction goes, if you ask me a question, I pretty much get you the answer right off the top of my head.
Really, you didn't want to get started yesterday?
Well, I've still got some other stuff going on in Padre Island. But I mean, I see, I'm a, I'm a pretty hyper person. I don't like to sit still. And once I start, I see that interest start clicking. And my goal is to stop the interest, because then that stops the bleeding. And everybody makes money. I see this for a win-win for both of us.
I agree.
I have a question. Are we talking like curb, gutter, sidewalks, or the house is going to be?
The plan has already been set.
The plan was approved a few years ago. The only deviation to the plan is right now because Highland drains to bar ditches is going to be the ribbon curb that we approved.
Correct.
But it does have all improved streets.
Electrical, underground, above ground?
Yes.
Underground water, underground sewer. It is bar ditch, because we don't want to put that addition we originally appropriated. It's all done, and we sort of found out that the infrastructure is not there anymore. Time into antiquated infrastructure, we'll end up creating problems later on throughout the rest of the city. And that's the last thing we want to do. We want it all to work today.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I make a motion that we enter into a 50% participation with Highland Development for 20 units. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, for 20 units.
You'll hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, number six. Consider an act on a resolution to enter into an inter-local agreement with A, Byboard Cooperative, B, State of Texas Co-op Program, C, Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Mayor and council, the, the city has been purchasing from one or all three of these. We cannot find the resolution that was approved in order to allow us to purchase. So it's really just restating the obvious. Obviously, when you're partnering with these kinds of byboards, the buying power is greatly enhanced. And we are looking, as we are looking at the budget, we are looking at some capital outlay that's going to be needed. And so before we move forward, we want to make sure all of our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted.
So this is just housekeeping, then?
Yes, sir.
I recall that the council did this previously back when we reached this year. I don't know what happened to the resolution. I know it's been done previously.
Okay, so we're just housekeeping-like council. Aye, et cetera. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we enter into a resolution inter-local agreement with Byboard Cooperative, State of Texas Co-op Program, and Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Programs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's move it on. Item number seven. Consider an act on approving agreements with AEP and Versalink Enterprises LLC to build a fiber connection between City Hall and Public Works.
Mayor and council, Jeff, Jeff is here to discuss. This is really an item to allow us connectivity between our facilities so that we're on the same work order system, we're on the same purchasing system, and we've got redundancy, and we can all see what we're doing. Right now, we rely on cable one, and this would be our own fiber, would be our own fiber connection that allows us better access and protection of our resources. It is also an item that was included in the bond package as part of that IT improvement. This is one of the very first items that establishes that connection.
Do you have any questions?
Just be ready, just be ready in case anyone has a question here.
I think you want to write again.
And so the first initial cost is going to be 30? The cost on this?
Yes. The, Jeff, do you want to go on into, we, we will have an annual recurring fee for the leases on the, on the poles as we, as we cross fiber, but it is a relatively...
It's a low, it's a low number. It's just under $10 per pole. And I believe it's 60 poles.
Okay.
So it's, the recurring cost is actually very low. The initial cost will be the contractor to actually hang the fiber. And that'll be the biggest, the biggest hit.
Okay.
I just have a question. In the case of a hurricane and the poles get knocked down, is it like insured?
I believe we have...
It's going to be part of the AEP service agreement. When AEP puts their pole back up, we've got to get our, our stuff back up. AEP is going to get the spine up, but we will have to contract with somebody to get our things back up.
Does it have to go on a pole? Is there any other alternative?
That's the cheapest.
It's a cost per unit. It's put in brown. It was, instead of already grand, we're looking at 300. So I would expect them to hang it in the air after that.
Okay. So we have no friends at AEP? I'm just kidding.
We do. That's, we, we actually do, which is, which is the $10, which is, why the $10?
Okay, okay. All right. Okay. Just, just asking.
We would have been $100.
It doesn't hurt, right? Doesn't hurt to ask?
Well, there is an initial part of the setup is, and each year goes around and looks at every pole, and they charge us $100 per pole to inspect the pole, make sure it's, meets the minimum requirements for hanging that, that cable.
Looking at poles, right? When will, when will it start? It's approved by the council. What would be the...
That would be depending on AEP.
Okay. Is there like...
If the contractor's ready to go, we would just need to have the inspection completed and ink on the contract agreement.
Okay. Any timeframe from AEP when they're able to start this?
We've got to stand behind the Bob Sells of the world who are asking AP to extend electrical. It's just a matter of where we are in the, in the line. I would have no idea.
Any other question? So what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we enter an agreement with AEP and Versalink Enterprises to build fiber, fiber connection between City Hall and Public Works.
Second the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Then, Consider an Act on Planning and Zoning Items and a public hearing to change the outdoor display usage. And I guess this goes over to our city attorney.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing open for the purposes of taking up the matter concerning change of outdoor display uses, motor vehicles and related uses, open storage uses, processing and commercial uses from conditional use to that primary use in the general business district. So you want to...
Sure. Mayor and council, this is the, this is the action that would allow the car lots to be a primary use on Wheeler and commercial in our general business districts, as opposed to requiring a conditional permit, which is difficult for businesses to operate under. We heard a lot of feedback from the council and also Planning Commission, so staff is recommending the, the use be changed to a primary use. Planning Commission also met on this item and recommended the change to a primary use.
Any questions of the council? Is there anyone in the audience here as opposed to this request? If not, then I declare a public hearing closed.
Okay. Consider an act to change the outdoor display usage in 10-213 Motor Vehicles and Related Uses and Open Storage Uses. Processing and Commercial Uses from Conditional Use to Allow Primary Use in the General Business District. What is the pleasure of the council? Any questions?
I have no question.
Okay. So what's the pleasure? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, we're trying to figure it out real quick.
It's either, you say, "I make a motion."
That's the one for the budget.
Sorry.
Make, make a motion to change the outdoor display use policies, number 175 in 10-213 Motor Vehicles and Related Uses and Open Storage Uses, uses number 206 and 207 in 10-214 Storage, Processing and Commercial Uses from Conditional Use to Allow Primary Use in the General Business District.
Second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you, Billy. That was really good. Okay.
Mayor and council, item C and D has not been heard by Planning Commission, so we need to pass on that item.
Okay, so we pass on item C and item D?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or just we pass?
No.
Okay. Next, we go to items E, Public Hearing on Violation Structures Are in Such State of Condition as to Constitute a Violation For Which the Owners Are Chargeable Under the Code of Ordinance, Section 5-72 Minimum Standards for Buildings. And the following are the addresses. And I pass this over to city attorney? Okay.
This is a public hearing to take up the matters set forth under Agenda Item P regarding minimum standards for buildings and uses are applicable to structures located in 212 North 12th, 150 South 11th Street, 345 North 13th, 952 South Rife, and 644 South Rife. City Manager?
Mayor and council, these are, the structures are up on the screen. These are, this is 212 North 12th Street, 150 South 11th Street.
Is there a house back there?
Yes. 345 North 13th Street, 952 South Rife Street, and 644 South Rife Street. Staff has approached you about being aggressive on our demolition and rehabilitation. We've partnered with the chamber. Several businesses have stepped up to offer demolition assistance for these types of structures. These property owners have been on notice, several notices in fact, and we've gone through trying to work with them through the process. We are now at the point where the structures are either not salvageable or the property owner has not stepped up. And therefore, we are asking council to go ahead and issue demolition orders.
Have we heard any response from the property owners? Any, Michael?
We've contacted the district, even small businesses over the last year, and all the different locations also found out. I'm a single person, but it's on them.
Okay. Have any of the letters been returned to the city?
They, they, they all met their destination of best actions, and for whatever reason, it's not as hard.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone present tonight? Is the owner or is the possibly representative of any of these properties, that being, again, 212 North 12th Street, 150 South 11th, 345 North 13th, 952 South Rife, or 644 South Rife? Number of the council, have any further questions? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you. Okay. Number F. Consider an act on the violation structures are in such a state of condition as to constitute a violation for which the owners are chargeable under the Code of Ordinance, Section -72 Minimum Standards for Building, for the following addresses, which is 212 North 12th Street, 150 South 11th Street, 345 North 13th Street, 952 South Rife Street, and 644 South Rife Street. What is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I make a motion that we order a demolition notice, or to act on a demolition notice, under Code of Ordinance, Section 7...
5-72.
Oh, mine just says 72, actually.
Yes, what it says to...
5-72 for all five structures listed in the agenda.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And that'll go to G, Public Hearing on the Request of Sandero Cove Holding Company to Rezone from R7A Single Family Dwelling District to A2 Apartment Dwelling District. The property is described as lots 25 to 32, block 477, Aransas Pass, 556 North Houston Street, Aransas Pass, Texas. The properties are currently zoned R7A Single Family Dwelling District.
Mayor and council, the, the property is before you on the screen. This is Sandero's property. He owns an adjacent property, and, and his wish is to expand a few more buildings onto the site. I'm sorry, you haven't opened the public.
This is a public hearing. As set forth under Agenda Item G.
I'm hungry, Alan.
Now, City Manager, if you'd like to...
I'm hungry. I'm hungry.
I was waiting for you to say something.
The, the rezoning is to A2. One of the concerns of the Planning Commission was the amount of units that can go on that property. He doesn't own that many, that much property, and the density wouldn't, wouldn't fit. But A2 is appropriate in that neighborhood. This is off of Wheeler. He, he, those properties are managed well. They look well. And so staff does not have any issue recommending approval of the A2.
Can you pull up where the property is right now that he wants to build on?
This, Michael? This, this little piece that he's got left.
You said that's on Wheeler?
This is off of Wheeler. This is Wheeler.
Oh, okay. Never mind. I know.
I'm sorry. Cleveland's.
There you go.
The other Wheeler. Thank you.
Is it on Houston?
Yes, sir. It's on Houston.
Is there a representative from Sandero Cove?
Yes, sir. You want to come on?
You want to come forward?
My name is Romiro Serra, and I'm the president of Sandero Cove Holding Company. Actually, the lot is already within the fence. I think you might have pointed that the lot adjacent to where I'm at, there is a space to put in like another fourplex, and that's all I was asking, is just one more building.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who's opposed to the application for report rezoning? If not, then I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay. Move to item H, consider an act on the request of Sandero Cove Holding Company to rezone from R7A Single Family Dwelling District to A2 Apartment Dwelling District.
I make a motion that we approve the request from Sandero Cove Holdings Company to rezone property R7A Single Family to A2 Apartment, property located lots 25 through 32 Block 477. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So construction will start when?
In two months.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We've already discussed item nine, so next is the city manager updates.
Mayor and Council, we have a few items to cover, and Republic Services is here for their item. First, I wanted to talk to you about, we are starting a performance audit for all of our engineering work done by our prior engineers. You will see that contract on the July 21st agenda. We will be using the same firm utilized by the city of Alice. Also have a rep from our Tri-County here to discuss the state, to give you just a brief synopsis of the state. Oh, he had prepared. Just a brief, we talked to you last time about the condition of Tri-County and the solvency, and letting the council know that they are okay. They're going to ask the city for some additional funding to offset some of the losses under the new healthcare rules, but overall, we believe we can meet the funding request in the budget. Republic Services is here to discuss an item in the contract that is going to impact our commercial customers and the overfill and some of the items that are being thrown into dumpsters, so I'll turn it over to Mike. Mike Greaves with Republic Services.
Thank you, Ms. Carillo. Good evening, council, staff. Appreciate this opportunity. You may have in your packet a personal letter that was sent to Ms. Carillo.
They don't have it.
Recently. May I approach council?
They don't have it.
May I approach council?
Sure, absolutely. They will be enforcing Section 4.12 and Section 8.03 in the contract that was approved by council.
As you've probably noticed, or may not have noticed, for the longest time now, we've tried to do our best from a collection standpoint in the commercial sector, and this is not just Aransas Pass, this is a lot of our communities. So I'm having the same conversation with city councils elsewhere. But we almost lost a driver for Aransas Pass recently. He had, the poor gentleman had to pull a refrigerator out of his commercial truck because somebody put that refrigerator in one of our dumpsters, out of business. So I don't know how they got it in there because it was quite creative, but they managed to do it. And our driver was on his last whim because it is summer season, it is peak season, you've got the heat and all these other factors, but part of our job as a company besides providing service for a community is to make sure that they have a safe working environment and the rules are followed and our equipment is maintained. Having a refrigerator in a commercial truck, there's blades in those trucks and they have to compact the waste debris, construction debris, refrigerators, things of that nature can damage those blades and impact the truck in efficiency and safety. And so therefore, someone in the community will be impacted by it. Some of you may have noticed over time, if a commercial truck doesn't make it to the route to collect someone on a given day, these types of things can cause those delays. Therefore, there's carryovers to the next day. Okay? I have some pictures that I wanted to enlighten the council on that'll give you an idea of what we're talking about. In all honesty, for the public, the community, it's a communication. People don't get the memo. So for all these years, they may not have known that, hey, I've got a dumpster, I can put construction debris in it. I can bring my refrigerator from the house because I have a business and put it in my dumpster. But there are unacceptable items that in our contract, none of our cities would pick up. So here's a picture, as you can see, where there's some sheet rock, some two-by-fours, boards, a door, things of that nature. Of course, you see the regular bag of garbage as well. This is not that bad, it's just a taste of, you know, unacceptable items. On this letter, you'll see a list of those items, and as I was mentioning to Ms. Carillo, with your assistance, I would like to see if the city can help us by informing all the community business owners, these are unacceptable items. And moving forward to get their attention, we can help our drivers by saying, hey, we care about what you're telling us, we're going to do something about it, so we're going to work with the city. We would like to impose a overload or violation fee of $50 per occurrence, bill to the city invoice each month by the business in question, and we will take pictures, as you've seen, for each of those occurrences in case anyone asks why. And the city in turn would have to pass on that charge to the customer since they bill on our behalf, and therefore, there's no expense to the city on this. Here's another picture here. You see, this is inside one of our trucks. Okay? That is construction debris. So that type of debris, when we're trying to compact and maximize those loads, will cause the damage we're discussing. Next picture, please. How many of you seen this? Okay? It happens quite a bit. Now, we would love, okay, how many of you been to a party and someone overfills the trash way too high, it's the Eiffel Tower, and then nobody wants to take the garbage out at that point? Because it's going to fall along the way or something's going to happen, right? Well, this is what happens on a commercial scale. Okay? You can't bring bulky items to your commercial dumpster that do belong from the residential section. Now, in your opinion, is that maybe what we would call an overload charge? Okay.
I don't know. It depends if the truck got broke that day or the time before that and that occurred. After the truck got broke, it had a flat, or they picked up the trash on time, every time, and then that happened?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
On this particular case, I'm not sure, but I'm just showing the picture of what it looks like.
So then we need to make, we need to be able to distinguish the difference whether that particular picture, you picked up the trash when it was supposed to, not you didn't have a flat and the tire was broke.
Sure.
And then that picture happened.
Correct.
As long as we can distinguish the difference.
Absolutely. And then outside of everyone's control is the illegal dumping factor. And unfortunately, no one can take accountability for that. The business owner, the resident, okay? So we, as your solid waste provider, will step in and do our part, but we just need your help. Next slide, please. Okay. This picture right here, you see all the loose paper and debris on the ground? That's not an overload charge, okay? But one of your residents who lives in the house right behind this business is very upset because oftentimes, the wind will decorate that person's yard with the loose debris. So we probably need to do a Bag Your Garbage campaign in a lot of communities, so it doesn't just apply to your house, but it applies to the businesses, too. Most solid waste should go in a garbage bag, whether it's your business or a home. And so that would solve that problem. The only other option is to move the container to another location away from that home, which we will look into if that's possible. So, next slide, please. Ah, the mattress hidden in the dumpster. It happens. Creativity at its best.
Did that place on the truck to compact it?
The mattress? I think it soothes it. I'm kidding, though.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Compared to some of the other debris, it's probably not as bad. So, next slide. Okay. Classic overload that we see in the majority of our restaurants in all the communities, except for the bakery café, they do a pretty good job breaking their boxes down.
I got a camera watching you when you pick it up.
They do, the staff there does a pretty good job, you know, breaking them down. And that's not the bakery, by the way, it's just an example, but the reality is, I understand it, restaurants don't want to break down boxes. Nobody does. It's inconvenient. But there's a couple of solutions. Increase the frequency. If a restaurant or a business is getting two pickups a week, they have the ability to call city staff and request a higher frequency of collection throughout the week. That would solve that problem. But the reality is, most business owners don't want to pay the difference. So if we impose this overload charge, it'll start to get the attention, it'll help out. I'm thinking maybe all the slides.
Yeah, the city has the ability to add a day of collection, and since I've been here, we've only had to do it once, and that was a motel along, I think it was a Super 8 motel, was it? Who kept having that debris in the neighborhood behind them, and so we worked with them and closed. It still wasn't working, so we went to an additional day, and it seems to have resolved the issue with the neighbors. There you go. McDonald's.
Okay.
Well, they bagged their trash.
They did bag it. And I am very pleased to see that the solid waste was bagged there, so, you know. Our drivers do the best they can do. Can we do better? Absolutely. But with your help, this will help a lot of our situation, and so we can try to keep valuable drivers that are doing a great job for us, okay? I'll open it to any questions you may have, council.
Just kind of wondering, can you increase the size of the dumpsters?
With the type of commercial service we have in Aransas Pass, which is what we call side-load service, they don't make those dumpsters any larger for capacity. Now, in the future, we have converted some of our municipalities to a front-load dumpster system, but I think you may find, and we've evaluated this before, that may be very difficult in certain sectors of downtown and other areas that have alley collection, and it would be inconvenient for the businesses. So the first step is to look at their frequency of collection if they can increase it. Good question.
Okay.
With the city's permission, we are looking to implement these overload fees and violation fees to July 15th. So that will allow for some time to notify the businesses as a courtesy that they could be expecting to see these charges.
I just have a question. When you said as far as the mattresses and things, because I know I've seen where people go and they, at night, and just dump things there, and so a business owner arrives to work the next day and they've got it all cluttered, is, are they going to be penalized for that? Or how are you going to, that's not fair to me and the business owner for them to be penalized for some, for someone to dump things out there on their side, and that's, I can't see like the bakery having a mattress out there. I mean, they don't cook mattresses. But, you know, I'm just saying, I mean, just as an example, it's, how can you distinguish? I don't think we should penalize, come up with a different way to monitor what we can do to implement that, because a business owner shouldn't be penalized for someone else to dump.
Ms. Carillo, I believe that your transfer station at this time, if someone were to have, wake up in the morning and find a mattress outside their transfer station?
We do, or Public Works will pick it up.
There you go.
So all they have to do is call?
Is that seven, six days, five days a week?
I'm sorry?
Is that five days a week?
Public Works is typically picking up. Yes, Mr. Bustos is there consistently now. Obviously, we don't want Public Works to have to keep behind Republic. That's a perfect segue for, we do have, in the contract, worked out all the community cleanup days, and this Saturday is our first community cleanup day where people can bring stuff, not mattresses, but all of the other stuff that's ending up right there on the side of the containers.
Is there a way, I'm just...
How do you secure a dumpster like this? Like, that one looks pretty aged. How do you secure that dumpster?
Well, most likely, that one needs to be replaced, and we normally allow a replacement as a courtesy, maybe once every one to two years if you're an account holder with us. In some cases, though, we have accounts that do abuse that privilege by what they discard in it, for example, hot liquids. Any liquid form is going to cause rust and stains and overspill, as you see, and we will start charging at some point for the additional request to swap containers out.
I have a question for Police Chief Blanchard. Does your officers patrol dumping, like in the evenings, alleyways, places that typically have mattresses?
For illegal dumping? Yes, we do. We actually respond to insurgents or people being seen called. I respond to one of the child's papers.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I may add one more comment to your question earlier about what do you do with the mattress situation. Prime example of community businesses that will call us independently, which anyone can do this, if you have a special cleanup that you need performed, you can call Republic Services at 361-698-5000. And we will quote you prices on a per-grip basis, or whatever the best method is to collect the debris that's outside of the normal apartment complexes do this quite a bit, because when they have residential move-out, sofas, furnitures, fixtures, that's not part of the pickup, as you've seen, so they'll call us and we'll...
All right.
Thank you for your time, council. Appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
One of the discussions I had with Mike is, the driver will be taking pictures of the violation, so we've got to come up with some sort of appeal process, is it they call city staff or they call Republic directly? At this point, they're going to be calling Republic directly to get a hold of the photo and the violation. Hopefully, as things subside, they can turn that back over to city staff, but in the beginning, they're the ones that are going to have the customer service because we want to be able to, and they do, too. We want to be able to know how many complaints we received, what was the metrics on satisfaction and customer service, so. Your drivers are carrying cameras now, correct?
Okay.
And then the only other update I had was just a reminder about that July 12th, this coming Saturday, we're going to have dumpsters situated outside the old, I always point wrong, the old building inspection department. It's a free community cleanup day for the residents of Aransas Pass.
So it's going to be over there and not over here?
Yeah. Am I pointing, did I point wrong again? Okay. Court, you're right here.
Over here? Okay.
I had it right the first time.
We should be able to tell with the dumpsters there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. That's going to be a dead giveaway. Okay.
We have a, we have a list. We can provide the list.
Just to give you all a little update on EMS, we still have a, quite a reduction in entrance income, so we're looking at having to make up next year about $60,000, give or take, and we're probably going to be spreading that out over all the cities and counties that we serve. So right now, we're looking at Aransas Pass's portion being about $25,000 more than previous years, but we also service Ingleside, Gregory, Ingleside on the Bay, and we get a small subsidy from Aransas County, and we also get subsidy from San Patricio, so we're looking at collecting the rest from those entities. And you have any questions?
How many of the calls that y'all get, do they come here to the Aransas Pass hospital?
I'd say about 30% give or take, and I think the next one in line is Spawn Shoreline and the ER in Portland. And 40% of our call volume is generated in Aransas Pass. That it?
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, there is a Federal Energy Regulatory Committee meeting on Tuesday, July 15th, at 7:00 in the Portland Community Center to talk about energy rates and energy sources. We've tabled the finance update to next week, although you do have the financials in front of you.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Now, next section is the citizens' comments. Name, address, please state your name and address, and the time limit of three minutes.
Hello, council. I'm Rosemary Vega, and I'm with the Chamber of Commerce and also Shrimbury. And I am here tonight, first of all, to thank you for your participation and your support of our ginormous event. There's no denying that it's growing, it's getting bigger and bigger, and with that comes some challenges, but most importantly, I want to thank y'all for the employees' participation... And with that comes some challenges, but most importantly, I want to thank y'all for the employees' participation and, um, the amount of time and effort that they put into that, particularly the Public Works. They always have a great attitude, and they're always helpful. And, you know, sometimes we hear things about employees and the negative side, and it's really important to praise them when they do, do well. And also, the Police Department, on top of everything, you know, they take care of everything. This year, we had sixty-three thousand people on the grounds, and I think they only arrested one person. That's one more than last year because there was none last year. And, um, with that, most of all, we found that with this growing event, we have, uh, come into some challenges with parking. Sylvia and I have drove around. We've tried to find some new locations. We're going to look for some new landowners to try to open up more parking spots. And, we also had issues with, um, admission. We couldn't get, we couldn't get the people in the gates fast enough, and we couldn't turn over boxes fast enough. So, that's an issue that we'll address next year because we're not going down, we're going up. And, we're gonna continue to do that. Um, there's no question that this event has a massive economic impact on our community. HEB, uh, just in that one place, out of our food vendors, was a hundred thousand dollars in sales. Um, that is not the store. Roland told us the store was, they couldn't keep up with the store on Friday night. Ram Restaurant, Saturday morning. The, um, and the other thing, I don't know if anybody's aware of, is that, um, the comptroller's office comes in there and picks up everybody's tax ID number. So, we're getting the credit for all of the sales taxes going through those hundred and thirty vendors that are going through that, that are going in there and, and selling. And I talked to, I haven't had a chance to talk to a lot of them, but I've talked to probably seven or eight of them. Some of them are really hesitant to tell you how much they make, go figure. But, the sticks that I talked to, um, eighteen thousand dollars, easily. So, I know there's a lot of money out there that's being made, and some of them aren't gonna report it all, but we do the best that we can do. We just know that, um, this event works for us, and we thank you for everything that you do for us. And with that being said, last November, um, we decided that, um, we had some board members that were very passionate about bringing a Christmas tree to our town. And so, we took on a load, um, and spent seventeen thousand dollars. Twelve of that came from the city, and five of that came from the chamber. The city agreed to lend us twelve thousand dollars, um, with the understanding that we would pay that back within twenty-four months, with our first payment being due in November. And we decided that we would, um, also have a food booth, which we raised three thousand dollars for. So, we, we decided our last board in the meeting that we would go ahead and pay the entire tree off and, um, just figure out a way to fundraise for the next two years, um, on our, on our own. So, here's your hot check.
That's not good. Is it hotter than a two-dollar pistol?
Thank y'all very much. And if, I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all wanna know anything about shrimp brewery. Eric, I think you had a question about the attendance mainly because of the towers for the phones? Um, I have your numbers. On Friday, we had eighteen thousand, three hundred people on the grounds. On Saturday, there was twenty-eight thousand, and on Sunday, there was twelve, twelve thousand, seven hundred, for a total of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred people.
Wow.
All right. Anything else?
I was gonna say, I think time's up, but thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. They were so emotional, our timekeeper didn't keep time.
Thank you for that.
It was a great event.
Timekeeper slacking over there.
I knew that even the property owners were, uh, opening up their vacant lots and... Yeah, I know, that helps. That's good.
My name is Jim Covington. Uh, I live at fifteen-nineteen South McCamble. And I, I wanted to compliment the city on the fireworks display. That was the most magnificent fireworks display I have ever seen. And I, I've seen a bunch of them. I had seen the one at Keywood the night before. And our, our fireworks display just outdid everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
My name is Ernie Torres. I live at seven-fifty-nine South McCamble. Lived here all my life, fifty-six years, no, sixty-six, but I was counting. Friday afternoons, around five-fifteen, around my area, influx of dogs being set loose. I had two, Sunday morning, well, these, these are very big dogs. Two were in my yard. There were two rottweilers, male, female, brown. What can I do about it? Who do I call it? Saturday, Sunday, Friday?
You, you still call the city's number. We will respond with Animal Control or Public Works. Somebody will respond.
Somebody will respond?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, for the animal lovers, if I get attacked by, deal, what I do in my property, can I kill it? I'm reconstructed, okay?
I don't know the answer to that.
So, I guess I'll have to... Only got three minutes, Al. Yes, sir. Okay. Yeah, because I, I took my dog out. She's fourteen years old. She's a miniature, uh, Doberman Pinscher. But, she hasn't got no teeth like me, you know, but, um, you know, I, I was afraid for the dog also. And besides me, I told my wife, the only thing I had at, at point blank was a, one of the deals, you catch flounders. And I'm like, I'm like, watch out, dog. Please leave my yard. And I have it off instead, you know? But, they came into the deal where the cars come in, so I had no choice, no choice. But, like I said, Friday, at Friday, once, they know that, that they're, that they, they believe they, nobody's working at that time, you know?
The dogs, the dogs know nobody's working.
So, I asked for your...
Or the owners know nobody's working.
I asked for your help, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other comments?
My name is Dan Moore, and I live at one-fifteen Amberjack. I, uh, feel that the problem with the animals here in Aransas Pass may be because of the people letting their dogs loose, uh, no spade, no neutering, and this is the basis of our problems. Now, why nobody ever pointed that out is baffling to me. You guys are doing a good job. And I'm embarrassed about the publicity that you got. The fireworks were wonderful. I hope we have them again next year. The free hot dogs, wonderful. Wonderful way to entertain the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any, is there any other comment? I was gonna say, before I close the meeting, that, um, an observation, police officers do not know how to throw a football. Okay? Observation, okay? But also, just wanted to comment, uh, City Manager Sylvia and her staff. It was just a wonderful event for the, uh, for the residents. Had a lot of comments, uh, they came by, worked stating how their kids enjoyed the event and had a really good time. It was a very hot day, started off early at one o'clock at the park, at McCamble Park. And that was a, a, a moving, um, dedication groundbreaking there for our renaming the park. And so, all Sylvia and all the city staff that was there, that helped. Thank you. I think our citizens really enjoyed it.
I, I couldn't have done it without them. And, uh, HEB was very generous with their five thousand dollar donation. And, and we stretched that five thousand dollars till it screened. But, hopefully, next year, it's, you know, word gets out. It, it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and, and I've, my heart was so moved by the children who just could not even believe that they were getting free stuff. And parents who, who were coming up to Megan saying, I've got five kids with me, but I only have four dollars. How much is everything? And couldn't believe when we said it was free. So, very, very heartwarming. Our screen has arrived. Uh, we will be starting movies either in the park or on the harbor, depending on the wind. Um, and so, we'll start doing movies every two weeks. So, we'll need some input on what, what are kid-friendly movies, because I don't have little ones anymore. We do have a, a comments on livestream.
Kathy, uh, I'm just gonna share, if anybody wants to respond. Kathy H., I hope they are going to stop the animal shelter director from murdering all the animals in their shelter instead of finding them homes. He should be embarrassed fireworks over dogs. Part of the no-kill coalition is neuter, uh, spaying the animals before they are adopted. Sad you pick fireworks over the animal. And then, Michelle Stolfler, great comments. Thanks for attending this meeting and being the voice for the animals.
Okay.
And for the record, I did not euthanize my own dog. I found it a home.
Okay. Then that'll move us to, uh, item number twelve.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim? Jim?
Jim Reeves.
Oh, did you?